We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. This time if Brandon Pugh, the Odessa Police Chaplain would come forward and lead us in our invocation.
Will you bow your heads with me? Lord, I want to thank you for today, God. I want to thank you for this city and for this local government. Lord God, I pray that you give them wisdom, Lord God, as they represent the people of this city, Lord God, that we would give them an ear to hear, Lord God, that you'd walk with us, Lord God, and bless our economy as you are, Lord. We thank you, in your name we pray. Amen.
And at this time, Councilmember Graff will lead us in our pledges.
If you would join me, please. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to our state flag. Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge is allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Tonight, we have the privilege of presenting a proclamation to a family whose father actually served on the city council back in the 70s. So if the Canelas family, please come forward.
All of them. All 20 of you. I didn't have the pleasure of knowing your father, but I did understand, we were talking in the back, we always talk about proclamations a little bit, that he was the manager of Piccadilly. And we were talking about our memories of the Piccadilly, and it was a great place. It was something we truly missed. I've got a proclamation, says City of Odessa proclamation, whereas Mike Canelas served the City of Odessa for many years as a volunteer service, including a few short months as a member of the city council. Mike was born in September 23rd, 1933, and passed away in October 23rd, 1972, after a lengthy illness. His years were marked by his dedication to the best interests of the community as he organized. Served as a president and secretary of the Odessa Hector County, or Hector Lions Club, zone chairman of the Lions International, and award member of the Odessa Boys Club. Even though in his short time, his performance of his duties and responsibilities as a council member was characterized by excellence and constructive contribution to the many municipal government in our city. He married Nellie Garza and moved to Odessa in 1960. They had two sons, George and Rudy, and four daughters, Delphina, Mary, Lucy, and Florence. And the City of Odessa expresses our gratitude to the Mike Canelas family and for Mike's service to our city. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me, the mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim, March 27th, 2018, Mike Canelas Day. Throughout the City of Odessa, I urge all citizens to remember his service, dedication, in making our community a better place to live. Thank you all very much. Many times, as leaders, we get the recognition, but more than any time, y'all pay the price for us being the way. And we just deserve just a small way to say thank you. And would anyone like to say anything? That's a no. Okay, well, thank you all very much.
I was very proud, you know, like I remember, we were kids like him, but daddy had us run and do little things to vote for him. I'll never forget. His little thing was, try him, you'll like it. He was very proud of what he did, and he was a good father. And hopefully, our kids and his grandkids will take part in the city like he, you know, like he served also. Thank you so much.
Now, we move to the consent agenda, and there are a couple of items that need to be removed.
Make motion, remove C and F from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We can now have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item C, consider accepting a donation from Atmos Energy and appropriating funds to Odessa Fire and Rescue. Chief Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This city council agenda item is to consider a resolution accepting a donation from Atmos Energy and appropriating the funds to Odessa Fire Rescue. We received a donation on, in the amount of $5,000 from Atmos Energy. These funds will be used to purchase items for the Odessa Fire Rescue Honor Guard and the Odessa Fire Rescue Poppy Ground Corps. This is their second donation, so at this time, I'm going to ask them to step forward. We do have some representatives here from Atmos Energy. As they come forward, I'm just going to go ahead and introduce them. Brandy Price, Manager of Public Affairs. Jason Guzman, Operations Supervisor. Joel Greer, Operations Manager. Kenny Hunter, Operations Supervisor. And Jonathan Mieram, Operations Supervisor. And again, just on behalf of Odessa Fire Rescue, the men and women of Odessa Fire Rescue, we would like to thank you for your support. And not only the support that you give for our organization, but what you do for the community as a whole. It just really shows how socially responsible you are as an organization. So thank you very much, and thank you for what you do.
Say, um, cheese. Okay, he didn't say that.
Brandy, would you like to say a word?
I'm not going to use the microphone. I think you guys can all hear me, but I just want to say, we work with John and his folks on a daily basis, just about many different situations in our line of work. And we can't thank them enough for what they do, but this is a small token of our appreciation just to say thank you for what you guys do every day, not only for us and the business community, but for every citizen in Odessa. So thank you, guys, you do a great job, please, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to item F, review and accept the 2017 comprehensive annual financial report.
Council, Mayor, we have David Dree here with the accounting firm of Weaver to do a short presentation. We went over this in Finance Committee last week in detail, so we think we can just do a short presentation and then have your approval. This completes our process, and we will be submitting it to GFOA this week.
That looks more like my presentation than the other one, anyway. Although, Mayor members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. Before you deny, we did have a detailed management meeting to go through this and with finance. Most of y'all were at the Finance Committee meeting the other day, and we appreciate your time there and your service to the council. So this is the end of the audit. Process started early in the year. We finished now. We're through QC, Quality Review. We're ready for council's approval. We'll issue the opinion that we talked about the other day, and there's some subsequent event work that we'll work through, some down-to-date type of work. But if you go to the next slide, I've just, I put a couple of slides together. I brought some of these guys with me the other day, and y'all, y'all got the bottom of the rung tonight. It's just me. I apologize, I'll do my best, but we've got Gaither, the QC guy, the IT department, Greg Peterson was with us the other day, Seth was with us the other day, and several people that participate on the, on the city's audit from around the state. The opinion report was the unmodified opinion, that's that clean opinion of the financial statements, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance items that I made bring to your attention. Remember, it was a single audit, too, so not only do you get the Weaver opinion on the financial statements, but the federal awards that were tested under the Uniform Compliance Act, had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no findings, no question costs. Everything was clean, just like you would expect it to be. So this is a net position slide at the primary government. If you take all of the, remember, all the governmental activities and all the business-type activities, and you roll them all up, and you add them all together, and you take all the assets and all the liabilities, and you end up with net position. And the net position is divided into three categories, the net investment and capital assets restricted and unrestricted. This slide's got five years' worth of net position. So what I just described shows 2013 in the green, and then 2017 in the blue. And you can see that net investment and capital assets, which is all of the buildings and vehicles minus all the debt, building and vehicle type assets minus all the debt related to those, you can see how those have been increasing over the last five years. That's because we've been adding to the assets, we've been reducing the debt. The restricted, we didn't have much restricted for the first three years, 13, 14, 15, then a little bit came in, in 16 and 17. Not a lot going on there, that's just the assets, the dollars that are tied to the bond, the restricted dollars to the bond. But the big, the big difference here, what I, why I put this slide in, it says in 13 and 14, we had unrestricted dollars. We had, in 13, that's about 62 million, and 14, that's about 74 million, and then all of a sudden, it went negative. I said, well, why did our, why did it go negative? If you remember, that's when the Gatsby '68 came into play, and we recorded the liability associated with the TMRS pension and the fireman's pension. That moved that number about 70-something. The Gatsby itself was 90-something million, but we had about a $20 million increase. So that number went from a positive unrestricted down to that negative unrestricted. And then in 2017, that's about 22 million. We, our unrestricted deficit came up a little bit because we had an increase in 2017. Next slide is just, it's just one, all of the major revenues of the city for five years, 13 through 17, water and sewer.
Ah, jumped on me.
Jumped on me. See if we can go back. Here we go, so. Water and sewer, and solid waste are the two big revenue generators over on the proprietary funds, and then property taxes and sales taxes. And you can see, again, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, the big sales tax increase on the right-hand side, from about 30 million to 38 million. And if you add all the light greens up and all the light blues up, in 2013, these four categories of revenue brought in, about 104 million. And at the end of 17, or for the period ending 12, 31, 17, it's about 146 million dollars, about a $42 million dollar increase over that five years. Then I drop down to the governmental funds, just the governmental fund piece and just the modified accrual piece, I'm full of accrual, just revenues for 17 and 16, side by side. The biggest revenue is obviously in the governmental fund, property taxes, and the sales taxes. And you can see the, the increase there, it's about 67% in 2017, that was 61% in 2016. The largest increase is the sales tax increase from 30 million to 37 million.
David?
Yeah?
I just wanted to bring up a point on the waste in the water. And those revenues are, those are a wash, you know? The money that we take in on that's not, that's not profit that we take in on that. That's just what it costs to operate that, that's operated as a, as a business track.
No, that's a good point, yeah, absolutely, that's a good point. So this is just the revenues.
I just didn't want people to think, man, the city's.
Yeah.
We try to keep that to where it's even, and then sometimes when the cost starts getting above what it costs to operate it, that's whenever the city makes increases on that.
Yeah, and not only is it just operational cost, but you've got to have enough money to replace those depreciable assets as well. So, yeah, that, that side is just revenues against revenues. Thank you, that's a good, that's a good point. This one is expenses against expenses at the governmental funds, just for the governmental funds. And the biggest piece of our, of our governmental fund expenditure is public safety. And those public safety numbers are 52 million in our year, 2017, and about 50 million in 2016. And the rest of them are, you know, pretty minor. I mean, they're still big numbers, but not compared to public safety, where the bulk of those expenses are. And that's about 97 million, you mentioned that, so again, back on that expenditure slide, it's about 97 million both years. It wasn't a big increase. And there was some capital, if you added capital outlay to that, we had more capital outlay in our 27 year and 2016. Good. And I dropped, again, just the top-line revenues, 17 and 16, side by side. You can see the 44 million in water revenues in 17 versus the 39 million that you pointed out, just top-line revenues in 2016. Expenses for those funds with public service supplies and then other services and expenditure expenses in those funds for 16 and 17. And I think that's all I've got. Just real quick, real short, I just wanted to say thank you. The financial statements prepared by your staff, we actually do just the audit, we don't prepare the financial statements. We helped a little bit with the TMRS and the pension accounting, but the financial statements themselves are not only your responsibility, but prepared by your staff, and that is big kudos to your staff, a lot of thank you that needs to go into the time involved in making this finish here today. As always, I'm here to answer questions if I can.
Any questions? And I'll just reiterate what David said, thank you to the staff and all of your hard work.
Thank you very much.
This is a huge process, and y'all make us look really good. So we really appreciate that.
I think a motion we approve.
Okay. We have a second. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. Consider approval of the ODC Board recommendation to terminate contract with the Odessa Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, OHCC, while continuing negotiations towards a new and amended contract. Ms. Betsy Tripple, do you mind coming up?
I'm Betsy Tripple-Hardt, and I'm the Chair of the Odessa Development Corporation. I'll be glad to answer any questions. We had a good and thoughtful conversation last Tuesday, Mayor, I'm sorry you were not there. You may have questions of what was discussed.
My answer, oh, Michael, so. Any questions from council?
No, I think you mentioned that we had a thorough conversation. I think at the end of the day, it's, it's going to be a good process, you know, with what we discussed, with what Gary said was going to happen with the contract, giving them an opportunity to, you know, correct everything or what's going to the table. The one request that I had was if we could just make sure we expanded the list of the items that need to be completed in order before the 60 days, because from what I understand, once we make this motion and it passes, the time starts today. And we need to get them that list so that, as soon as possible, so that way we can, you know, move forward.
Councilman, with all due respect, tell us who we need to give it to.
You got it.
And we're willing to work.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mine's not a question, but I just think that, that we take the right steps, that this can be a win-win for ODC, for the Hispanic Chamber, and the city. That's our purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
I recommend that we approve the ODC Board's recommendation to terminate the contract, Odessa Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
While they continue their negotiations towards.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next move to bid awards. Consider award of the contract of the 2018 Seal Code Project. Your honor.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is to consider an award of contract for 2018 Seal Code Project. The bids for this project were opened on March 13, 2018, and we had three responsive bids, and the lowest bidder was Brandon Peaving in the amount of $1,369,569. The bid was within, the bid was within 12% of our estimate, and our estimate was approximately 1.5 million. The purpose of this project is to seal code approximately 600,000 square yard of major and local streets, and it is approximately 29 linear miles. The Public Works Department has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding the bid to Brandon Peaving in the amount of $1,369,569. I'll be trying to answer your questions.
How many miles?
23.
23 miles? Okay, any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion. Second. And motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three, consider award contract for the 2018 pavement renovation.
The Public Works Street Division is planning to use pavement restoration technique in lieu of Seal Code for portion of the preventive maintenance program for the night time. This product is approximately half the cost of Seal Code per square yard and offers a good service life. It is designed to be applied to low-volume streets, and our intent to use, to use it on residential streets. And we are going to do this year approximately 733,000 square yard, which is approximately 35 linear miles. Payment Restoration Incorporated from Burnie, Texas is the provider of reclaimed material in State of Texas. The staff recommends award of contract to payment restoration as the sole provider of this material for a contract amount of $770,401.80.
Now, what date will it start on?
It is between May and June, actually. They have to be done before August of last.
Would you let me know when it starts? Because this, I've really been very interested in this, and I'd like to go out and watch them again.
And organize it, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
If you have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, your honor. We'll move to a public hearing, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Meaton Mo Homes. Mr. Brandon.
Got your work cut out today. Almost as big as last week.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Regarding this first case, city sent, city sent out 45 notices. Thanks, thank you. And we had one notice returned, we did not have any written approvals, and we had two written protests. City Council approved this request on first reading on March 13th of this year. The property involved in the request is located southeast of the intersection of East 91st Street and Rainbow Drive. Site is currently zoned single-family 3. It's also zoned planned development, single-family, surface drainage, and designated future development, and this site is vacant. Land use in the general area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant and property owner in this case is Meaton Bo Homes, and the purpose of this zoning request would facilitate development of a single-family residential subdivision. This would consist of 84 single-family lots with average size of 7,369 square feet. This development would incorporate enhanced flexibility for design possibilities which would be related to building setbacks, lot coverage, and things of this nature. The area is located in the northern area of the city's future land use map. This area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed development is intended to be a quality new neighborhood that will maintain its long-term value through the attention to design and neighborhood amenities. It is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways, and the traffic issues that were related to this case have been resolved. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to the request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Is, uh, is this in the flood zone?
Uh, no, sir, it's not. Part of it was in a surface drainage area, but that will be mitigated to where it can be incorporated to have some single-family development on it, and the drainage basin will be altered to where it will still maintain and hold the capacity for any drainage out in this area.
Okay, any other questions from council?
No. Big Mo is working to begin putting in some parks.
Yes, ma'am, they are, they're working with, with the Parks Department.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second.
I'll second your view.
Motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by ICA Properties. Mr. Brandon.
Yes, sir. The council also approved this request on first reading on March 13th of this year. The property involved in the request is located northwest and northeast of the intersection of Mission Boulevard and Dorado Drive. The two sites are currently designated future development, they are vacant. Property in the area is surrounded by vacant, vacant land. The applicant in the case is ICA Properties, they do own the surface. RSP Permian is the agent for the drilling purposes on this, and the purpose of their request would designate the property as a drill site, and this would facilitate oil and gas well development on the site. The area is located in the far east section of the city's future land use map, it's south of Highway 191. The area calls for retail and commercial development that's backed by single-family residential development, and incorporated oil and gas well development would be regulated through the city's Code of Ordinances, and this is the drilling ordinance that we have in our Code of Ordinances. And it will require to include buffering, screening, and landscaping, which would minimize any impact in future surrounding development. The zoning request for the site is not out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood and the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to the request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval. And be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six, will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Vicki C. and Thomas Vinnie W. Hurd. Mr. Brandon.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city sent out 10 notices, we had one notice returned, and we did not receive a positive or a negative response related to the request. The council did approve this request on first reading back on March 13th of this year. The property involved in the request is located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Catalina Drive and West 24th Street. Site is currently zoned single-family 2, and it is occupied by a vacant residential structure. Land use in the area does consist of residential development and retail development. The applicants are Vicki C. and Thomas Vinnie Hurd, owner, and Selmar Counseling is the optionee on this property. And the purpose of the zone change request to retail 1 would consolidate the zoning of this site with the adjacent shopping center property, and it would allow the redevelopment of the vacant residential structure as a family counseling center. This area is located in the western portion of the City of Odessa. The area is considered retail development backed by medium-density residential development, and required design standards, which would include landscaping and controlled ingress and egress, would minimize any impact to surrounding residential development. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to the request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation. And be happy to answer any questions related to this case.
Okay, are there any questions from council? This is a public hearing, so we will go ahead and open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward.
Can I go back? I'm sorry.
Sure. Okay, go ahead and.
So, it's a house that's going to be converted into a home office?
Yes, sir.
I mean, not, not as an office.
An office. An office, family counseling, yes, sir.
I'm seeing where it is. It's in my district. I don't remember seeing it there, but...
It's on the backside of the shopping center where the old Gibson's building used to be.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, item seven, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Verna Headley. Mr. Brandon.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city sent out three notices. We did not have any notices returned, and we did not receive a positive or a negative response related to this case. The council also approved this request on first reading back on March thirteenth. The property involved in the request is located southeast of the intersection of East Loop three thirty-eight and East Fifty-Sixth Street. This site is currently designated future development. It is vacant. Land use in the area does consist of vacant land and retail development. Verna Headley is the owner of the property and the applicant in this case, and the purpose of their request would enable site development for a cross-fit personal services gym to be built on this property. The proposed land use for this area is consistent with the city's future land use map. The area is considered prime retail development land adjacent to northeast Loop three thirty-eight, and this will act as a buffer for any future residential development that might occur to the east of this site. Retail design will be held to aesthetic guidelines that will include building features, landscaping, screening, buffering, and controlled ingress and egress. Any metal building would have to incorporate building materials that present an enhanced face to the public. City's traffic engineering department has determined that the development proposed for the property would not add a significant amount of traffic to East Fifty-Sixth Street. Any traffic increase to the nearby intersection with East Loop three thirty-eight would be addressed through traffic signals that are scheduled for installation on the loop by tech stop later this year. Planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval to the request. Planning staff does concur with this recommendation, and be happy to answer any questions.
One question, Fifty-Sixth Street, who does that belong to from the loop?
Oh, from Fifty-Sixth, from the loop, that belongs to the city.
It all belongs to the city?
Yes, sir.
At what point do you start bringing that street up to city standards?
I will defer that.
Just food for thought.
I will definitely defer that as a help.
Just food for thought for future...
Yes, sir.
Uh-oh. Here we go. There's a...
Actually, Fifty-Sixth Street from East Loop to east to Fodry, that's all county road. Yes, sir. Fifty-second Street, west loop, that's the city street. Fifty-Sixth Street east is a county road.
Okay, so are we annexing, I mean, this property is inside the city limits, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, at what point do we decide a street belongs to the city or the county where we're annexing things around it? At what point? Now, that may be a question for my, whoever, but it just, I'm just, because I know the reason I say that is I know that the traffic on that street is not like it was two years ago. The traffic is, and that area is gonna get more and more.
And that section of Fifty-Sixth Street, I know there's right-of-way issues currently to widen it. I do know that the county is working on widening Fifty-Sixth from Billy Hext to Fodry to a five-lane roadway, so they're working on that section, but I think there's right-of-way issues about widening this section of Fifty-Sixth.
Civilization is coming out there. It's only there.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Lico Energy and Investments. Mr. Brandon.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city mailed out seventy notices. We had five notices returned. We did receive two written protests and two written approvals. The council did approve this request on first reading back on March thirteenth of this year. The property involved in the request is located northeast of the intersection of East Fifty-second Street and Connolly Avenue. Site is currently zone single-family three. It is vacant. The property is surrounded by residential development. The applicant and the owner of the property in this case is Lico Energy and Investments. The purpose of this request would create a hundred and two lots, they average size fifty-five hundred and seventy-five square feet. This would facilitate single-family residential development and related uses on the property. This subject area is located in the north area of the city's land use map. This area is generally considered one of the main areas for residential growth in Odessa. The zoning requested for this site and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways with the intended land use context taken into consideration. The preliminary traffic flow designed to Fifty-second Street and Independence Drive will accommodate any anticipated traffic flows, and it also would minimize any impact to adjacent developments. Planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council?
What is, sorry, special dwelling district?
Yes, sir. Does that mean? That means that it'll be a varying building setbacks from the traditional single-family twenty-five-feet front yard setback.
But it's gonna be homes?
Yes, sir. It'll be single-family homes.
What's the difference in the setbacks?
Five feet, from twenty-five down to twenty.
So, there's gonna be more of a setback or less of a setback?
It'll be less of a setback.
So, how does that affect their yards or backyards?
It really won't affect the backyard, because we're relating to a front yard setback on this missed ground. The backyard will still be the same. There will be setback requirements that will have to be met, but the backyard will be pretty much a traditional backyard style.
What are the plans for putting parks into this subdivision?
In this subdivision, there's not one, because the subdivision is really not of, you know, there may be a hundred and two lots in there, but overall acreage is just not significant or satisfactory enough to have a park in this area, and I do believe that the developer has put a park in in his subdivision just north of this, or he's in the process of doing one. Larry, am I correct in that?
You are correct. We're putting one in, doesn't matter.
Could you come and talk to us about that a little bit, please?
I'm Larry Lay with Lico Energy Investments.
We're getting ourselves into a real bind in the fact that we're doing all this growing, and developers are not putting in any playground areas or any park areas, and that is truly going to affect families. It's affecting our quality of life, affecting people that want to come in and reside in our city, so I'm wondering what you're planning to do for parks?
We have one scheduled for Desert Ridge in the last phase we started, which was approved by the city. We've had a four-acre tract that will be developed into a park for Desert Ridge, but we have nothing planned for this subdivision on Fifty-second Street.
What's the size of the total acreage of this one, Larry?
It's nineteen acres, or eighteen and a half acres, I believe.
So, there's no green space, nothing for these young children to go?
Not in this place here, not in this subdivision here. There was just not enough room, and we couldn't run the streets from Independence back to Fifty-second Street.
Now, are you going through with the Parks Department with your plans for parks?
We haven't started. I originally had started with Richard Morton, and we had discussed it. When we got to this areas, when the street was to be developed, we would contact somebody with Parks Department.
So, you're gonna, when you develop it, you're gonna...
We're gonna surround it. Right now, the park, we're adding a couple of, let's say, a couple of hundred houses on Grand View and Boise. We're just now starting the next phase. We can't access the park or even the area, because we have no streets, so we're building the streets now.
Yeah, my point was, is y'all are like, when you build a street, you're gonna take
You surround it. You're gonna surround it with houses. You can't have it off in the middle of the field and not have a street to it, so that's what we're doing now.
Right, okay. And approximately how far is this development from there?
You can see it from here. It's, you go, you see the SPD right there. That is part of it, and then if you go take the little arrow too far north, you come down. Yeah, it's a little bit further. It runs off of Dawn. Yeah, a little further.
Were Dawn will run through there?
Yeah. Dawn and Winchester.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, is that for children to walk to from this area?
I don't know.
Are you gonna put maybe some walking paths or something in that area?
In the park? We can put whatever.
In this area?
There is no room. These are strictly houses. There's no room. We had to eliminate the alleys. We have the front-end dumpsters to the front. Huh? Interior lots. But there is no walking pass in that subdivision.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, Mr. Lico. I mean, I am happy that we're gonna do something with that space. One of the things that really concerns me is abandoned space. I'm concerned about, you know, especially on the southwest side of Odessa, on the west side of Odessa, you know, being areas like this where we could go in there and develop some housing. I encourage that, and I apologize for not missing that little spot there, because eventually it turned into nothing. It's just been sitting there for years and...
It's been there for approximately, I think, forty years.
Yeah.
It was originally to be built as a junior high. It was zoned as SF three, so houses could be on there today without being before you today. So, this is, we're just changing the zoning from single-family three to special single-family or special dwelling district, excuse me.
Yeah, that's why I asked that question, because I wanted to make sure I made that comment to you. I can't wait to see how the layout's gonna come out, but either way, I wanted to recognize that on your part, so...
I'm open to developing any part of town.
I understand that.
If the opportunity arises, I'm there if you need somebody to go there.
Well, Larry, thank you for everything you do for our community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are these going to be very small homes?
No, they're not. They're the same size that we're building over on Desert Ridge on Grand View. They're the same size.
What is that size?
Fifteen hundred to two thousand. Three bedroom, two bath, two living areas. It's like Boise and Socorro. Both of them are different kind of projects.
Okay, any other questions?
I will say that all those lots right here are already pre-sold.
Tough business, man, right there.
Well, they're sold to the builder. I'm not, I just developed the lots and everything, but the demand is there, so, and they're looking for affordable housing, and that's what we got.
Great.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Lico Energy Investments. Mr. Brandon.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city mailed out thirty-one notices. We had one notice returned. We did not receive any written protests, and we did receive three written approvals. The property involved in the request is located west of the intersection of East Ridge Road and Parks Lagato Road. This site is zoned office. It's currently vacant. Land use in the area does consist of residential development, office development related uses, and vacant land. The applicants in the case are Lico Energy and Investments owner. Jennifer Minyard is the optionee on this, in this request, and the purpose of the request is for a specific use permit that would allow a custom personal service facility in an office zoning district, and in this case, it'd be a salon and boutique. Site plan has been submitted. I do apologize for that. Site plan is not included, but it is in your package. It does include a building. It's approximately three thousand square feet, and there are fifteen parking spaces included, and these do meet ordinance requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to the request with the following conditions. The hours of operation would be limited from eight AM to seven PM. Any signs would need to meet ordinance requirements. The building setbacks and parking will need to meet ordinance requirements. The city of Odessa's landscape ordinance requirements must be met. A copy of the joint access agreement between lots thirty-eight and thirty-nine will need to be provided by the applicant. The council will have the right to review the permit upon receiving any neighborhood complaints. This would be considered a temporary permit, and the right of termination for violation of the terms and conditions of the permit or because of a negative effect on the, or the, of the use on the neighborhood could be, occur after a public hearing and also adoption of the site plan, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council?
It's not a question, but I think it's very interesting that you received three responses, and all three of those responses were approval.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's, I think that's kinda neat to notice.
It's a, it's a very good support or service type use for residential development.
At this time, we'll open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item ten, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by S M B C Leasing and Finance. Mr. Brandon.
Yes, sir. The property involved in this request is located east of the intersection of South Fodry Road and Interstate twenty. Site is currently designated future development. It is occupy industrial development, is the FMC facility, and land use in the general area does consist of industrial-related uses to the north and south, I'm sorry, to the north and vacant land. A brief history of this, this land was annexed by the city back in October, and the facility was built when it was still in the ETJ, and it was annexed in to obtain city services, and after the process, the property was annexed in and is needing to go through the zoning process, because the applicant is needing to plat the property to increase the size of the yard, because they are expanding their operations out here. The purpose of the zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area. It is industrial development. It's not contrary to the land use plan of the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan and the Lico Industrial Tracks master plan. The post-original zoning is not out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood or the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of planned development light industrial with the following conditions. Development standards, which would include building setbacks, building height, lot coverage, parking, things of this nature, will meet light industrial zoning requirements that's set in the city's zoning ordinance, and land uses will include the uses that's allowed in the light industrial zoning district with the exception of a sexually-oriented business, and curb and gutter would not be required on any interior streets for this development, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council?
Now, this is in Midland County.
Yes, ma'am, it is, but it was annexed into the city.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed, nay.
Okay, the vote is four to one, and it passes. Thank you, Mr. Brandon, for everything.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next, we'll move to ordinances. Consider ordinance continuing the offenses provision of Chapter eight, Article eight dash three, Sections eight dash three dash thirty-one through eight dash three dash thirty-five. Chief Kirk.
That's a mouthful.[1789.02]
That's my fault.
That's my fault.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We do wish that you consider the ordinance continuing the offense provisions of Chapter 8, Article 8-3, Section 8-3, 31 through 35, establishing a doctoral curfew for persons under 17. This ordinance was originally enacted in two, excuse me, 1997. It is, this ordinance is necessary to continue the juvenile curfew ordinance. The local government code requires cities to review their, their curfew ordinance every three years to consider the ordinance's effects on the community and the problems the ordinance was intended to remedy. The local government code requires council review and have public hearings on the matter. And just a few highlights of, of the ordinance. The age effect is, affected by the ordinance are ages 10 through 16. The hours of the ordinance are Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Friday and Saturday, it's midnight to 6:00 a.m. And basically, people in those age ranges can't be in public places such as parks, streets, movies, that sort of thing. And there are several exceptions to the, to that rule. If they're in the company of their parent or guardian, they're okay. If they're on an errand for their parent or guardian, they're okay. If they are engaged in interstate travel, if they're involved in an emergency, if they're on a sidewalk in front of their house or their neighbor's house, if they're engaged in employment, in unemployment activity or driving back and forth from that activity, if they're attending, you know, a school function, a church function, those sorts of things. Over the last year, we wrote 143 citations for violations of curfew. And just as a note, Midland, San Angelo, Amarillo, Lubbock, all have curfew ordinances.
What, what period did that, did that 143...
That was the, the year of 2017.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Have you, have you seen, you know, as far as the change, if, you know, when, once this was passed, that gets controlled, you know, the amount of kids that are out after a certain hour?
You know, that is very hard to quantify, because this passed 21 years ago. And, and the data from 21 years ago is very hard to quantify to today's, in today's society. So, it's very difficult. What this does do is give officers another tool in their toolbox when they see misdeeds occurring.
I would, I, that's what I was gonna say. I would think that most of the time it would be used when there's a problem.
Yes.
It's just another way to get problems off the street.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under resolutions, consider to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Department of Public Safety for allied agency training.
The next two agenda items are, are very related, so if you don't mind, I will cover both of them together. We ask that you consider resolutions to enter a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Department of Public Safety for allied agency training and for the motor safety assistance program. These Mous will, they, they specify what training the Odessa Police Department must undergo to be authorized to enforce commercial motor vehicle statute. And also, they also specify the reporting requirements that the Odessa Police Department must follow with DPS and the Texas Department of Transportation. The first MOU allows the Odessa Police Department to enforce weight violations once the appropriate training is completed. And the second MOU is just the general MOU, MOU that allows the Odessa Police Department to enforce commercial motor vehicle laws once an officer receives the prescribed training.
Okay. I think that's... Okay.
That's one of the areas. His time.
Well, realistically, I mean, DPS has their hands full.
Yes.
With recs, same as you, everything else they have to deal with, and it's hard to get them to wait and the truck inspections.
Just within the city, so...
Exactly. Yes.
Cause DPS don't typically come into the city.
They typically do not.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor of item 12, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 13 was covered at the same time, so I won't entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Next, consider Youngham LLC facade grant. Ms. Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this evening. Woo-hoo! Woo-hooey! It worked! It's amazing when that happens. So, again, thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate you. I know this has been a long process for the Hams, and again, I appreciate you taking your time tonight to look at this one more time for us. This is Youngham LLC. It is for the Crenshaw Flooring Building. As you can see, the green lines are the downtown footprint. They are towards that back corner of the footprint at 615 East 8th Street. Your blue line is 1,000 foot within the, 1,000 foot around the convention center, red line, obviously Hotel Convention Center. So, they do meet that 1,000-foot requirement. Here's our current facade. Proposed facade. They are requesting the $30,000 grant. Their investment is $51,015, making a total investment project of $81,015. Nice investment on A Street. Here's how it breaks down. This building was originally built in 1956. It was purchased by Mr. Ham in 2010. The building is leased to Crenshaw Flooring. They are excited to be in the downtown footprint, and they are excited to bring the building up to standards that we have set forth in the downtown master plan. Should be done within 12 months easily, and was approved by ODC on, in March, by Design Committee in February, and Finance Committee elected over last week. They are with us this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those, as would the Hams.
Is the sea crate going away?